Thank you for tuning in to Beyond the Deas, a podcast about the stories taking place in and around El Paso County, Colorado. I'm your host, Scott Anderson, and my guest today is El Paso County Commissioner for District One, Holly Williams. How are you doing today, Holly?
I am doing well. Thank you.
Great, great. Well, thank you for being here today. I appreciate it. And before we get started, I want to quickly add that if listeners are interested in more stories about people doing good in and around El Paso County, or hearing from county leadership about local government priorities and how they operate, you can find additional episodes of this podcast on your podcast platform of choice. But to get started, Holly, I'd like it if you could give us a bit of your background prior to being elected as a county commissioner.
Okay, well, we moved to Colorado in 1992. My husband's legal work brought him here. And since moving here in 1992, of course, that was the year that Coloradans passed Tabor. I've always had an interest in local government. I've kept an eye on city government and county government, state government. My major in college was political science, and then I started working for El Paso County, actually originally in 1999, back doing foreclosures in what is called the Public Trustees Office. And I was able to work for county government for eight years and then moved on to working for federal government. I really enjoyed working for the county government because El Paso County is so accountable with the taxpayer dollars. And so eventually I came back. I worked for a while in the Department of Human Services, but then I worked at the Household Hazardous Waste Facility, which is one of our programs that is actually run off of Acres Drive. And it's run based upon what's called a tipping fee. It's not run on taxpayer dollars. The garbage companies pay in a bit of the money to run the Household Hazardous Waste Facility. You could take electronics there, and you can take different things that you would not want to put in the landfill. And it's a good way to recycle different items through the county, and I enjoyed working there. But there came a time when I decided I did need something more challenging. And I looked around and thought, well, I could run for county commissioner, and I've always enjoyed local government, always been involved in local politics, but never thought I myself would step forward and run for office. But I did, and it is just very enjoyable to work with our staff. It's very enjoyable to work under the fiscal constraints we have with Tabor. And as one of the few counties left in the state that abides by Tabor, it's always interesting to see how efficient and effectively our staff does things with a shoestring budget. And we don't see the federal government on a shoestring budget. Even we see the city, the state increasing its budget and to cover different needs. And we continue to really operate under Tabor, just as we have since 1992. And it's, we've spent many years cutting back on things until we got to the lowest cost per government I felt we could get, and then we cut back even more. So it's been interesting to watch how El Paso County has dealt with the Tabor over 30 years now. And that's really why I wanted to be involved in local government.
So aside from all of the work stuff, I understand that you have a passion for music, which is very exciting. I also have a passion for music. But how did you get involved with music and what has been your experience with it?
Yes, I started playing the piano when I was six, and I loved to play the piano. I really enjoyed it. And by the age of 10, I started taking lessons from a college professor, practicing several hours a day, and eventually performing several solo piano recitals before I even went into college. So when I went to college, I was going to be a music major, and I would have gone through it pretty quickly because I knew a lot already. But then in college, I decided I wanted to become a politician. And I remember my piano teacher, who's one of the most influential people in my life, saying, you want to go into politics? So I instead went over and studied political science. And but over the years, the things I learned through music and learning to focus in on the details on any given piece that you were playing on the piano, whether it was Bach or Beethoven or Rachmaninoff, you would focus in on the details of each note, to each measure, and the dynamics. And that ability to focus into the details of a project has been very helpful in my job as commissioner, because I've been able to focus in on to the details of a land use issue, of a transportation issue, any of the issues we've had to focus in on, I've been able to focus in to the level of detail I need to know. And dig right into like, it's budget season right now. So we're going over next year's budget, one of my favorite times of year, because I enjoy listening to our department heads talk about our staff and the many wonderful things they do, but also how successful they are with the budget that we've set for them at the beginning of the year, which by law they can't go over, and how well they've done meeting the needs of the county. So I've really enjoyed the focus. That musical study has led me to be able to focus in on to the details I need to as commissioner.
Yeah, and you bring up the budget. So earlier today was one of those multiple budget meetings that happens here near the end of the year. What are a few things that you're looking for when being presented with that budget from the different departments here at the county?
First of all, I always enjoy listening to the cost running that we are running on per citizen. And I brought in some of those numbers because we, last year, I think in, I'm sorry, in 2019, we were at $330 per citizen, per taxpayer. And there is an organization called Ten Counties, and it's the 10 metro counties in Colorado. And they always meet once a year to do the 10-county budget, to review how other counties have done with their monies and their expenditures. They started this organization back in 2004. And in 2018 or 2019, one of the counties, Jefferson County, finally revolted. They said, we're tired of El Paso County showing us up. We're not going to participate anymore. And that was the fun thing I always enjoyed seeing, because we run on eight mills and we have a 1.23% sales tax. And yet we do so much better than the other counties. And Douglas County has 14 mills and, I believe, four cents of sales tax. And they complain they don't have enough money. And it just, it's fascinating to me. We are usually on the same level with Arapahoe County is the next most fiscally conservative county. And we still beat them by several hundred dollars every, every year. So I really enjoy the budget as well, though, because our employees work so hard. And many people look and say, well, they're government employees. Of course, they're getting a 7% to 10% pay increase every year, much like the federal government would. And the state government even offers fairly large pay increases every year. And that's usually something that the newspapers focus in on is what kind of pay increases are you going to be giving your employees? And so I watched, but for years, El Paso County would only give 2%, 2% in 2014, 2% in 2015. And that's not a lot of money. And what it led to was a lot of turnover for us. And the turnover was damaging because once the cost to train a new person, if it takes a new person three to six months to learn their job, the turnover would kill us because we were always training new individuals. And so in the past couple of years, we've been able to do a compensation study, bring the salaries of certain departments up that were, have been traditionally low. And, and then now we're looking at, last year, we were able to do a larger pay increase just to keep up with the economy, which was 7%. But this year, I say we're only at 4.5%. So I was a little disappointed in that. But when you look at the Tabor restrictions and all of the critical needs we have in the county, yeah, simple things that you wouldn't think of. We have a Veterans Service Office that is the best in the state. And we have over 100,000 veterans in El Paso County. And with federal legislation that came down called the PACT Act, veterans are now, now qualify for a larger amount of benefit if they've been exposed to certain things while they've been overseas. And our Veterans Service Office normally gets an extra $10,000 more per veteran. And so it is a huge service to have in our county, to have a functioning Veterans Service Office that does such a great job. And so when you look through the critical needs we have to address first, the need to help those veterans, we have a wait time right now of six weeks. We need to train some new Veterans Service Officers so that that wait time can be cut down because we're a community that values our military bases, values our veterans, and that's the way we show it. And so there's other critical needs. One wouldn't think that having to have additional, having to have additional things for the coroner. But he's the only forensic pathologist in Southern Colorado. He does the autopsies for 23 counties that he contracts with. And he's one of the best coroners in the nation. And so we need to be able to have the ability, one, to investigate all murders, but two, to investigate any suspicious deaths. And he is such a critical and key expert witness in any of our criminal trials that we've had. And he's so well-respected throughout the state that when we have problems in other counties, other counties are coming to him to address those issues. And so a specific need to help the coroner make sure he can do his job effectively, making sure that we can provide, it was interesting today, one of the presentations that was a little bit drier, but we still get to hear all of them, was the facilities presentation. We have to provide the jail. Even the federal government's smart enough to stay out of providing health for the jail and providing the county jail itself. And we have to meet large standards when it comes to providing medical services towards our jail inmates. And then we also have to provide them specific services when it comes to the facilities, whether it be air conditioning, or clothes, or food, and those kind of things. When it comes down to the actual jail facility, we've had to replace a furnace in the jail facility, where we replaced LED light bulbs. That's kind of boring, but they are big needs. For example, we only had, for the longest time, we only had two elevators in the District Attorney's Office, and they've got six floors. They are probably the one office that carries the most amount of stuff to a courthouse for trial. And so to be operating on one elevator in the middle of a criminal trial is a lot of work, to have to drag a lot of things over to the courthouse. Another thing we have to provide, which is frustrating, is the state determines when you need a new district court judge or a county court judge. We are in desperate need of some new judges. So the state tells us, we're going to provide you new judges. We have to provide a courthouse for them. We have to provide the building, all of this public safety that goes around a secure facility such as that. Many attorneys work downtown. We have to provide transportation for the prisoners from the Criminal Justice Center up to the jailhouse. So, and then on top of all of that, it takes probably two district attorneys and four staff to help staff a courthouse room, a courtroom. And so we work closely with the Chief Judge Bane, who is the head of the judges over at our courthouse, to determine what his needs are. And he's allowing us to come in and do a courthouse study to see if he uses his facilities and if he just has big, large courtrooms for people, or if he has, if they share courtrooms. It used to be a judge would have his own courtroom. But in our courthouse, the judges share courtrooms. Some of them, when there's not going to be a trial, they just have a small courtroom. And they don't have the big juror box. So those are the different kinds of things that we have to discuss during the budget. Some might be interesting and some not, but it's, it's all a matter of providing the services we have to provide by law.
Right, right. Yeah. So the budget clearly is one of the larger things that commissioners have to deal with, get to deal with, right? Get to deal with, not have to. So what are some of those other responsibilities that you have as a county commissioner?
Well, we have, my favorite responsibility is actually dealing with our roads and infrastructure. And we have over 2,200 lane miles of roads and infrastructure throughout the county. That includes bridges, roads, culverts. But the biggest thing is the roads, the pavement, the gravel, the dirt. And we have all of these miles of roads and a lot of people moving in, and yet we spend very little money on our road maintenance. So when we first started in 2018, really looking into our road budget, we had road equipment that was more than 30 years old. So before we, before I came on board, the commissioners worked really hard to replace all the equipment. So at least we had new functioning equipment so we could plow the roads. One thing the county does with roads that the city doesn't is we plow all roads, priority one, two, and three during a snowstorm. That takes a lot of effort. And because you have in the northern end of the county, you have some, since it's right on a ridge, you get a lot of heavy snowstorms. And it takes a lot of effort to get all of those roads plowed. So that's one of the things with the thawing and freezing cycle. Being able to take care of paved roads is really, really hard. And then in 2008, we used to have at least two mills dedicated to roads. But because of budget cuts and Tabor, we would have to share back those funds. They come through the Highway Users Tax Fund, which is your gas tax. We would have to share back those funds to cities and towns. And cities and towns, but it would count in our Tabor calculation. So when I talk about employee turnover and employee training, being able to have the equipment we would need, that would be money that counted in our Tabor calculation as to how much we could keep. And yeah, we would have to turn it over to the city. And that doesn't help county roads. So the commissioners reduced it to 0.33 of a mil, which is just incredibly low. So one of the things we've been able to do over the past couple of years, as we've received COVID dollars and ARPA dollars, is really invest more into our roads. And it's really paid off. We've done at least 10 million a year. And we've been able to even get like two chip seal teams out to fix the cracks in the road. We have a new machine called the Bowmag where we can take a gravel road and overturn it and then put down a special substance below hand that makes it so that when it rains, it doesn't go bad as fast. So we have several different types of ways to treat these roads, and we've been able to get better equipment. And we even can now hire individuals. We hire high school students that did not graduate, and we help them get their GED. But we also hire them and we train them to drive. And to get a commercial driver's license is really nice, and we pay for that. And then they have a job. They can also finish getting their GED. They can support their family. And they can come away with the skill that hopefully they can stay for 20 or 30 years. And so we've been really proud of the success we've had in roads. It's still not as much as we want to do. But to go from where we were in 2018, where we had so many of our roads failing, to being able to repave a lot of them and regravel a lot of them, it's just been really rewarding as a commissioner to see that. One of the things that does cost us money now in the creation of roads is stormwater. So one of my interests as a child, my dad was a civil engineer, and the whole family ended up becoming civil engineers. And I didn't want to become a civil engineer, but I remember when it would rain, we would drive around, and usually vacations, including touring a dam like the Hoover Dam.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Or the Glen Canyon Dam. And then when it would rain, he would take me out and we would go and clean out the storm drains. So I have an interest in seeing how the roads respond to weather. And I can understand the stormwater issues we have. And with the federal government coming down, and they essentially gave us greater stormwater standards. So we can't allow stormwater runoff to go down to Pueblo because of environmental reasons. And so that takes a little bit more now sometimes to do a road. Because not only is it just laying down a piece of pavement, it's getting underneath, making sure we meet all of the requirements for stormwater if it rains. And making sure that we meet those requirements so that we can stay out of trouble with the Environmental Protection Agency, which is just one of those things that we do as a conservative government. We try really hard to stay compliant with the law.
Yeah, I mean, always important to try and do. So speaking, honestly, speaking of that, one of the core values here at El Paso County is actually transparency, which I really appreciate. Sort of the whole purpose of this podcast is a lot about transparency. So why is that idea of transparency so valuable to the work of our elected officials?
Today, one of the commissioners used the word data-driven decisions. And the transparency is so important because I think so often when we write a check out for our federal taxes or for our state taxes, or even this year when we had to write out our checks for our property taxes, because they went up so much, we wonder what in the world is the government doing with this? What is my school district doing with my tax dollars? What are they teaching my kids? And so one of the things we really push for as we go through the budget hearings and seeking out transparency is we will ask, so what is the cost to train another employee? How much does it cost to process a motor vehicle transaction? And so sometimes they will compare the number of motor vehicle transactions one person processes, you know, to get them to a better point in their job. We want to know, and we want the justification to make data-driven decisions. Because those are the things the taxpayers are going to ask us. Where is my dollar going? Why are you taking this much money? Because what they see is they see a big tax bill, most of which on a property tax bill goes to the school district. Very easily, the majority of it will go to every school district. But property taxes also fund county government. Sales taxes primarily fund city governments. And so not many of us spend a lot of time looking at our grocery bill to see how much sales tax we had to pay. But everybody sees those annual property tax bills, and they want to know. And so we'll show them a picture of a dollar that shows how very much, how very little, how much the school district gets of that property tax bill versus how much the library district gets versus how much the county gets. And it's really eye-opening to see how efficient we've come, become on that. So we are always pushing to do things more efficiently and more effectively with our employees. And it's not that a government employee can't meet the challenge, because we know they have. And we can prove that. And so we go out and we like to point out how efficient we are. It's why I mentioned the 10-county budget study and other counties not wanting El Paso County to participate anymore. Because we do such a good job, and our staff does such a good job of providing effective and efficient results based upon how little we are taking from the taxpayer to do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I actually, and it being budget season and all of this really kind of brings it to the forefront. So that picture you referenced of that dollar bill and like it being sliced up into all these different sections, it really does give you a good idea of where your tax money is going. I'm a very visual person, and I knew very little about local government before I started this job. And being able to see something like that to really showcase, this is how taxes are being spent, it at least seems to, I think, seems to a reasonable person. While some may agree or disagree on like, how much of that is going to specific segments? Like, this is easy to understand when it's built out that way. And I think in, again, that idea of being transparent about how we do things. Now, you might disagree with how much goes to one place or another, but like, at least being able to show that and saying, look, guys, like, this is, you know, to the penny, like, where things are going. Now, if you have, you know, something to say, I think that's another great reason why we do have these budget meetings, is people can come and look at that dollar and be like, hey, like, this percentage needs to be more like this, and this percentage needs to be more like that, and you should be spending more here and less here. Like, residents have the opportunity to come and participate in that way and really share those opinions. And maybe if you can speak to that a little bit, just that whole idea of having those opportunities for residents to come and voice their concerns when, you know, we are doing very important things, like redistricting earlier this year, the budget right now, like, they can actually be a real part of shaping what districts look like for the county or what the budget looks like for the county. So maybe if you could talk a little bit about that and why resident feedback in those types of meetings is so important.
Yes, we love to have our citizens come and speak about the budget, about land use issues, and honestly, about nearly every issue. For example, our clerk and recorder has put all of the ballot boxes online. So individuals can go and see, when you drop, can watch the ballot boxes to make sure that there's no, you know, misinformation on the election. And so we try to be very transparent in what we do. And on our budget hearings, it can be a lot. I remember before I started as commissioner, I listened to all of the budget hearings several times. And listening to what the departments do, it's hard to explain that one of the least glamorous things we have to do is provide the jail. It's, and also provide the medical for the jail, the Medicare. Federal government's smart enough to say, you end up in jail, you don't get your veterans benefits, you don't get Medicare, you don't get Social Security, you are, or Medicaid, you're in the jail. That's the county that has to provide your health and all the standards that go to that. That's something that when citizens look at that and they say, wow, I have to pay for that. But even the federal government, which spends a lot of money, is smart enough to stay out of county jails. And I think that's really an important thing to point out. And then to have to do things such as providing a courthouse, someone has to provide it. It's either the state or the county. And it's hard to do those kinds of things, but really, if you want to understand where your taxpayer dollar is going at the county, it's so hard to go to understand the federal budget and sit through all of their budget hearings and their continuing resolutions and all of their accountability. But we have just a couple of weeks in October right now, you can come and you can listen to all the hearings. You can even go out to alpasoco.com and listen to the hearings when you're home at nighttime. And you can understand, you can write questions and submit them, and they will ask them during the hearings if you want. You can call in and ask during the hearings. And it gives you an idea, it's really a transparent time when the department heads, the other elected officials, such as the District Attorney and Sheriff, they come in. And, and we can ask them questions of, are you really making the best use of these dollars? And they have to prove that to us. And so it's, it's, it's a good process because it's the time when we really look at the transparency and accountability. And it's all happens in just a couple of month period in October, November, and December. So it's really an interesting time to listen to that. There's other times when we have accountability reports with the audit and different things, but those are harder to understand.
Right.
This is the time where you can really understand, this is how much we gave the department. This is how they spend it. This is what they need it for and understand how county government works.
So you have served as a county commissioner for nearly five years now. You began your second term at the beginning of this year. Can you talk about some of the accomplishments that you're proud of so far? As well as things you'd like to see done prior to the end of your term?
Uh, yes. So one of my favorite accomplishments is the funding for Powers and Research. When I first moved here, Powers and Woodman was a four-way stop. And so that was 30 years ago.
Oh, man, I'm sorry. I live out in Falcon and I deal with that intersection a bunch. So I can't imagine that as a four-way stop, that's crazy, okay?
Yes, so to wait all of these years and with the, with the CARES Act and the extra spending during COVID and the extra spending after through the American Rescue Plan Act, we had a lot of extra money. And so the Powers and Research project finally moved up to the top of the list. I always say, we are probably about 10 to 15 years behind in road projects in El Paso County, which can be really frustrating if you're sitting on Woodman heading out to Falcon.
Yeah.
Or if you're sitting on I-25, that's how far behind we are. So when a project comes up, that was announced, we received a phone call Christmas Eve, that that had been funded by the federal government. And that was the best Christmas present I have ever received was Powers and Research. And so such things as that are really exciting to me to see that. Things such as, we've been able to reduce our jail population. Part of that has been because of COVID. But we've worked hard to reduce it by working through other means. So keeping a closer eye on what happens after a person serves their jail time and they come out of jail. Those are things that you wouldn't, you don't see on paper. You see a person coming out and not going back into jail. Trying to think what else. Hard to get past the Powers and Research. I think finishing the road through Douglas County, I remember. That was really frustrating because we knew it would be a toll road. But when we started building it, I remember, as my, I said, my, all of my family, my brothers and sisters are all involved in the engineering business. And my brother decided to drive over to see a Colorado Rockies game. And this was back in 2016 or 2017. And it was back when in the summertime, you would get four-hour waits because of the Renaissance Festival in Douglas County.
Oh, yeah.
And so to see that finally completed, because I remember when he called and he wanted to meet and he was just coming for one day, I wouldn't allow him to come down to Colorado Springs because I didn't want him to see how bad that road was. Because it was so unpredictable. And it was unsafe and it was a mess. And so to get that project done, when we've been able, the other thing I've really enjoyed seeing, although I haven't taken a big lead in it, is we've really upped our game in working with the Colorado State Legislature. And we work really hard to watch it when they are in session. And the reason is, is they come through and they come up with what they consider a great idea. And they pass it down to us without any money. And we have a statewide commissioner organization. I remember going to the summer meeting last year and specifically hearing someone state, I'm tired of El Paso County winning all the arguments. And it was really rewarding to hear that because it means we're being very effective in the state legislature. And we're making a difference on pointing out, you can't send us down an unfunded mandate because we are having a hard time meeting that with our little budget.
Sure.
And so those, those type of things have been very rewarding. The other thing was finally seeing the Fox Run Nature Center come up onto the top of the list. Cause parks for so many years, it's the lowest, we run our parks on, I think, $4 a citizen. It's amazing. And they're fantastic parks. My kids went to Cub Scout day camp, day camp in Fox Run Park.
Yeah.
My kids grew up in Fox Run Park. And to finally get to the point where we were able to prioritize a nature center and get extra money into building that nature center, we're starting a big capital campaign next year to raise money. But it's going to be a beautiful nature center. It's going to blend in with the park itself. It's going to have an archway walk that you can walk out and a tower you can go up in to see the whole entire forest, the Black Forest area. That's been a really fun project to see come to fruition. Just to watch that, to finally have our turn to get a park up in the northern end of the county.
Yeah. So what are some things that you think El Paso County residents should be paying close attention to in the coming months and years?
Road funding, of course. I would say definitely the road funding because we have so many other needs. The state legislature will meet and they'll say, well, that sounds like a good idea. We should require all buildings that are so many square feet or larger to be green energy buildings or to run off of windmills or something like that. And all of those type of programs and ideas take away from the real purpose of government, which is public safety and getting your family to work and to school and to play. And so the two things that government provides that are really at the base of everything is the public safety and our roads. And so I would always keep an eye on our road budget. We're growing really fast and El Paso County is set to become the largest county. Continue growth well up to over a million people in the next 10 years. And so we'll be one of the largest counties in the state and we'll have all of these needs. We have individuals moving from every other state. They buy a big house on a dirt road, not realizing that right now, if it's a dirt road, it is highly unlikely that it will ever get paved.
Right.
And we have had, back in the 2008 real estate crash, we have had roads that they paved half the road and then the real estate market crashed. And so now all these years later, when they're finishing building houses on it, they decide not to pave it because they don't necessarily have the budget to.
Yeah.
And so you'll end up with a cul-de-sac that's not paved. And explaining to citizens that that costs a lot of money to go from a dirt road to a paved road or to go from a dirt road even to a gravel road. And I think that's the key thing to watch is we demand a lot of all of our government levels. And with as much taxes as we pay, especially to the federal and the state government, we should
Yeah.
Demand a lot. But we need to remember at the end of the day and that is, it is truly the individual who controls their decision, controls, owns the decisions they make, the jobs they have and the money they save. It's not up to the government necessarily to save them from a lot of the things that are created. And so I would say to continually be on the watch for less government interference. And I think it's important, everybody understand what government does and how to be involved in each of their different local governments. Cause Colorado has a lot of local government issues from school districts to counties to cities, even to special districts, which control how your house is built. So I think the important thing is to always be aware and be involved in what's going on with your government.
Yeah, no, that's good, I like that. So I think we've covered a lot of ground here, but I just want to give you an opportunity to add anything else that you think would be important for listeners to know about.
No. I always find plenty to talk about, so that's, that's good. You know, just take the time and be active if you get the chance to come to one of our hearings there during the daytime. Or even if you get a chance to be able to watch them. It's, they're, they're interesting and we have public comment. And it's always worth taking the time to write an email or to submit a letter and, and see what the response would be to ask, because we really do try to answer the questions we're asked.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner Williams. I appreciate you taking the time today and for all the work that you do here for El Paso County. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
If you're interested in listening to additional episodes of Beyond the Dais, you can find us on Podbean or wherever you get your podcasts. Thanks for listening and we'll see you next time.